Well, good afternoon, everybody. And sorry about the late start. Every meeting I've had today has run into another one. And welcome, Director, members of the ACHD Commission that are here with us, and of course, the rest of you online. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. We, from the city side, and then I'll ask the Chair to do the same for ACHD, so we can take attendance with that. Clerk?
Agent?
Here.
Clegg?
Here.
Hallie Burton?
Here.
Sanchez?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Woodings?
Here.
All present. Great. Go ahead.
Can't use your microphone.
Sir, I'm not sure if your mics. Mine's really loud, and I'm not sure if yours on. Is it on? The button, is it green?
Oh, now it's green. It looked green to me. I'll call our part of the meeting into session, and I see from the television and from the individual sitting on my right that we're all here.
Excellent. And well, thanks. It's great to have you all here with us today. We've got quite a full agenda, so I think it makes sense just to jump right in. Are you Christie? Christie? Oh, Christie's over there. Great. All right. And first up, we have Christie Inselman, Senior Transportation Planner. Welcome.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Let me pull my presentation up really quick. Nope, that's not mine. Thank you for having us today. Can everybody see my presentation?
Yes.
Okay, good. So, good afternoon, everyone. For the record, my name is Christie Inselman, Senior Transportation Planner with Ada County Highway District. And today, I'll be discussing Integrated Five-Year Work Plan, the update for the 22 to 26. First, I wanted to review what we currently have planned and then in the Integrated Five-Year Work Plan for Boise. The first slide represents the projects in the Boise Northwest, North and Central Bench Planning Areas, as well as downtown and the East End. As you can see, we have quite a bit. The second slide represents the planning areas in the Boise West Bench Southeast and Boise Southwest. And Tom Laws will be providing you a presentation in more depth on the Southwest Boise area. And then, the next few slides are just all of the projects listed out and the construction years that we have planned for those. So, as you can see, for 21, 20 to 21, there's a total of 22 projects. Nine are community programs. Six are VRF. Three minor bridges. Two safety and accessibility projects. One major bridge and a roadway and an intersection project. These are the projects that are currently planned for construction in the Boise area in '22, '23, and '24. There are a total of 40 projects. Eleven are community programs. Ten are VRF, and those are vehicle registration fee program projects. Eight are minor bridges. Four, safety and accessibility. Three roadway projects. Two intersections and two maintenance and bikeway projects. And this one, I really had to scrunch the future ones. Apologies. These are projects for construction in the Boise area in '25 and '26, and there's 17 in those two years and quite a few in the future. And so, those are six or five VRF. Three community programs. Three minor bridges. Three roadways. Two intersections and one safety and accessibility. So, we have quite a bit coming up in the current adopted plan and more coming in in our 22 to 26. So, this is where we're currently at in the process for the annual update for the Integrated Five-Year Work Plan and where we're currently headed. We're a little over halfway through the process. We've done our initial outreach to our partner agencies, including the city, as well as the public. We reviewed our programming targets, our prioritization results, and our budget revenue projections with our commission. The next steps in the process will be to release the initial draft of the plan on July 14th, and then the comment period will run from July 14th through August 20th. In November of 2020, we did request a prioritization list from our partner agencies. The City of Boise submitted a total of 82 project requests. Seventeen were road and intersection projects, and 65 were community program projects. This year, we received a total from all of our partner agencies and the public of 805 project requests during the initial outreach, and that occurred with the November through the February timeframe. So, a lot. And that did increase from last year. We saw an increase of over 100 project requests from last year to this year. So, just a, going back and kind of walking through the process of how we select projects that go into the Integrated Five-Year Work Plan. So, as we stated, we request project lists from our partner agencies, and they include all six cities, the three school districts, Boise State University, and this year, we added Valley Regional Transit as one of our partner agencies. Project requests also are identified through, by the public, through the adoption of our neighborhood plans. And we have 15 plans adopted to date. These include sidewalks, crossings, and bikeway requests. This year, we have South Meridian and the Kuna area are going through the process of adoption. We also have bikeways that have been identified in the bike master plan, including our low-stress bikeway network. We also reach out to the public directly through social media outlets, as well as our website. We also receive project requests through our community programs applications. Once received, projects are then prioritized, evaluated for feasibility, and eventually added to the Integrated Five-Year Work Plan, always pending available funding. Unfortunately, this is not a quick process, as much as we would love it to be. So, talking about prioritization. Once project requests are received, they're ranked based on our commission-directed prioritization methodology. The commission-directed methodology uses a multitude of criteria to rank a project. We look at whether a partner agency requested the project, how it fell within that ranking. Were there more than one partner agency that requested that project? Is it located near a school or civics facility? Is it on a transit corridor? Is the project identified in the neighborhood plan? Are there existing facilities? Is it a complete network? Or are we missing critical connections? So, there's a multitude depending on the type of project that it is. We thought it would be helpful to show an example of how our prioritization works with that criteria. So, this one is Capitol Boulevard Bikeway Vista Avenue to the Green Belt. It's represented by the blue line on the map there. So, this project ranked number two overall in our community programs projects this year. And looking at the bike criteria, it's clear to see why it ranked so high. It implements a low-stress bikeway that connects to two existing bikeways, which is the Green Belt and the Shoshone Bikeway. It's immediately adjacent to Boise State University, and it's within a half of mile of three destinations. It also serves a transportation-dependent population. It's in the top 25%, so it gets the highest marks for that. It's also went from being at the bottom of your request list this year as an on-hold project to your number-one request under your community programs. And it was also added to Boise State's request list this year. That helped shift and elevate the project's rank. Because of that shift in priority and overall ranking, we're looking to add the project to the 22-26 Integrated Five-Year Work Plan for a concept design in '22 or '23. This is just a great example of how our prioritization ranking informs our programming efforts, which leads to our current stage of development of the plan, which is our programming of our projects. We've created a comprehensive project strategy, which means we like to, we want to go in once to a project. This includes changes to our maintenance strategy. The objective is to look at projects and corridors and neighborhoods more holistically. This includes completing critical connections, updating driveways, ADA ramps with our maintenance strategy, as well as including bulbouts with community programs projects and implementing our low-stress bikeway network. With this strategy, it will take longer to complete projects, and it will cost a little more. But in the end, we won't be going into an area twice. We don't want to go in with a pavement project and then, five years later, go back in and fix those sidewalk connections and update the ADA ramps. We'd rather go in once and complete it. For example, with maintenance projects, there'll be design elements and possible right-of-way acquisition. Federal aid projects carry environmental requirements, and funding of those projects can't move, and they will require additional local funds to complete the project. It means we'll also enhance our programming approach, and that includes more realistic project timelines. Again, they're going to take a little longer to complete, and it will increase, we need to increase our operational capacity to complete more projects as well and increase the funding towards those. This is just an overview of our community programs funding targets. Safe sidewalks and safe routes to schools are funding obligations for ACHD. We're currently targeting 1.6 million per year for the Safe Sidewalk Program, which is a maximum we can do with our current existing staffing. The VRF ballot commitment, which is the vehicle registration fee, is targeted to three to four million per year with a five-year target of 16.5 million. Our core community programs is a secondary focus item and is part of the commission direction. The target of that is a minimum of 5% of the overall capital budget with a five-year target of 15.3 million. The minimum 5% was set by the commission as one of their commission targets. And then, finally, we have our Resolution 2328 for any potential bid savings on other projects that would go towards community programs projects. So, what's the next stop in our programming of the draft plan? So, just a quick review of where we've been and where we're headed. We've completed the public outreach, our project prioritization. We've identified projects that will be scoped this year that hopefully can be added into the plan. And currently, we're in that development stage where we're trying to figure out how we're going to add more projects and make this a much more robust plan and more complete. Our plan for release date is in July. So, those are our next steps. So, the initial draft will come out July 14th. We would open the comment period July 14th through August 20th, and this is an opportunity as well for the city to review that plan and provide any comments back to the commission and staff on changes they would like to see or adjustments they would like to see in the plan. Our budget is planned for adoption on August 25th, and our Integrated Five-Year Work Plan is scheduled for adoption on September 22nd, and I will stand for any questions.
Christie, maybe a little more detail about what the proposed resolution for additional community programs funding would be?
Yeah, so that was recently changed to add, it was 5 million, I am correct?
Yes.
To our community programs, as well as additional bid savings. If we have a project that comes in under budget, those additional savings will go towards our community programs project. But an immediate 5 million is added to that community program, so our target of that 15.3 would jump up to 20, over 20 million for our community programs.
Which actually is also proposed to be shared geographically between the commission districts. And as you know, I think all the districts somehow touch Boise.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Chairman, if I could ask a question. You mentioned, thank you, by the way, that was a good overview. You mentioned that it's likely to cost more to do a comprehensive corridor approach, and I'm curious about that because it seems like there would be cost savings by not tearing things up more than once.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Clegg, apologies. I get so used to saying Commissioner.
That's okay.
So, when we say it's going to cost more, it means the initial cost for the project, meaning our maintenance projects, maybe it was only for the pavement. Now, we're having to expand the cost of that. No, not the overall cost of the project isn't going to go up.
Okay.
But those projects that normally were a smaller component, we were just going to go in and do this. We're looking at them more holistically. So, when we're putting the project in, it's going to cost more on the onset.
Okay.
Long-term, though, it's no. It's not going to cost any more.
Well, it actually produced cost savings? That's, I guess, the question.
Good question.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Clegg. In the long-term, yes. And the reason it will cost less long-term is that, as again, as Christie was saying, instead of just looking at our maintenance projects and such as a maintenance project, we look at it now regarding what type of bike lanes we have to put in, what type of pedestrian things there are. How do we improve the infrastructure for all users? The frustrating part, of course, will be some of our winter operations when our plows may or may not be sort of, I'll call it, concrete-friendly on some of those things. But that being said, no, long-term, this should be very good. It's called one-stop shopping across the board, and I think the neighborhoods will be very pleased in that we're not out there disrupting their lives two and three and four times. But that's the concept, and long-term, you should save money.
Madam President?
Will be, if we can get all of our stuff done once and done, then it'll be Public Works projects, utility projects that would be responsible for any additional tear-ups. And you know me, I'll be more than happy to let that one roll off my back.
Madam President?
We can coordinate. If you're doing those kind of corridor projects, it would seem like it would be also easier to coordinate the Public Works projects. I have one more question, if I might.
Yeah, go ahead. And then, I also saw that Commissioner Hanson's trying to get our attention, too. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So, my second question is a little more comprehensive one. And early on, one of your slides, you showed projects that were requested by cities, I believe, and this is what I want to clarify for, especially our new council members who haven't been part of this for a long time, that some of those that you consider requests by the city actually come from documents that we agreed upon at some time in the past. And so, because they're in that agreed-upon document, you look at them as a request by the city to do that project. My question, and that's not bad or wrong. I think that's a good thing to do because we should have those comprehensive documents. My question is, as I'm thinking about it, we don't have a review for those. And so, at no time do we go back and say, has anything changed? Is this assumption still right? You know, should our master streets map be changed because assumptions have changed and your direction has changed? I'm wondering if we could think about a process. For instance, in the Southwest, at one time, we were pursuing area-of-city impact expansion beyond the New York Canal to the south. We're no longer considering that. Because we're no longer considering that, I think there's quite a bit different kind of expectations and needs in terms of some of the connections beyond the canal. But we don't have any kind of process in place to, you know, on a regular basis, review that and make sure that we identify those. So, just like your comment on that.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Clegg, we actually do. The Master Street Map is not a one-and-done document. That's one that we actually come back every few years, and we do that in conjunction with our partner agencies. So, that one was just updated in 2020, and we went to all of our partner agencies. Have your land uses changed? Have your assumptions changed? We look at the modeling. We get from Compass on that information. So, we do, just like our CIP that gets done every four years, the Master Street Map is the same way. Our neighborhood planning areas, we, those are going to be on a rotation also, that we go back to the communities and make sure, are we still hitting the right projects? Are these the ones that you want? What have we completed? What's new that needs to come in? So, we definitely don't want any of our, any of our long-range plans to be just stagnant and maybe aren't consistent now with what is going to be done there in the future. We definitely come back, and we want to have that conversation with our partner agencies, for sure.
Well, that's good to hear. I guess, maybe, you know, on our end, then we need to figure out how to promote it to the spot that, you know, if it needs to come to the council's attention, we get that. I guess I would also just observe that, over the years, I've rarely seen a project go away, even though assumptions have changed. So, I bring this up because I really am curious about some of those pipeline projects, especially the legacy ones, and how we can really take a good look at them and make sure they're still the right project today. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson, go ahead. And then, after Commissioner Hanson's question or comment, we're going to have to move to the next topic, because we've got four more items on the agenda.
Great. I just wanted to agree with Councilmember Clegg that we do have to constantly reevaluate these assumptions because once we plan something out and project out some, a building, a long-term building, private interests are justified in relying on that, purchasing land or making investments. So, it's really critical that we constantly update those assumptions and probably do it more often than just once every four years with respect to the Master Street Map. The, I'm really pleased. I want to sort of highlight the work that the staff has done to integrate projects. It still looks like a long list, and it is. But we've had a tendency in the past to sort of silo things. You know, this is a crosswalk project. This is a maintenance project. And not think of things from a complete street standpoint. We actually do have a complete streets policy that requires us to look at our streets, and that helps you then to look at the priority corridors because we don't measure things like, is this an important corridor for housing? Is this an important corridor for transit? Is this an important corridor for economic investment? So, you can then help to set those priorities by the streets and not by the projects. In the area I represent, I focused on putting together a whole bunch of projects and recommending updates based on input from neighborhoods to 29 streets. Well, they're sort of spread out now amongst 400 and some projects. But if you were moving in that direction, and I would encourage you to, as it were, walk the streets and find out where some of these corridors are and what those priorities are. Because then, very much so, once we set those priorities, we start moving on them. And a number of people remember the work we did putting together the corridor of Coopney Street. Well, that was done a number of years ago, but the design hasn't happened yet, but it's phased in. And I think that kind of approach really leads to much better investment at the time. So, we're dealing with multiple things and save, not save a lot of money, I think, a lot of money by going into those streets more comprehensively. The other thing I think that is critical to help save money is the use of temporary installations so that we can test things on those streets, let the neighbors understand what might happen. We don't have to spend a lot of money putting in concrete and then allow the neighborhood to get a feel for, okay, this is what the change is going to be like. This is how we're going to get traffic to slow down, to make it easier to cross. So, there's ways in which, if we look at it from a project standpoint, we haven't used a lot of temporary installations, and I'm hopeful that with your help, we can incorporate that in a streets approach, a complete streets approach to this long-term plan. And it makes it easier to read and understand rather than just this long, 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 long list of projects.
Thanks, Commissioner. I've asked Tom to go ahead, and he's up here now, ready to start, so we can move into the next one. I'll mind everybody. We had a lot of stuff. We probably should have done some agenda limiting. There's a lot on the agenda today. We've got four more items in one hour. And so, Tom, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor McLean. Members of the council.
And welcome back.
Thank you very much. President Goldthorpe, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Tom Laws, Planning Supervisor with the Ada County Highway District. And it's great to be back. I'm glad to be here in the council chambers. And today, I'm going to be presenting on a little bit of history for the Southwest Boise and probably continue this conversation that we're having with Commissioner Hanson and Council President Clegg. But first, I tend to dive in a little bit to the current conditions of the Southwest. I'll go into some detail on the land use planning history that's occurred to date, the transportation planning history, and then, what are we doing to implement those plans? So, first off, with current conditions, and I'm pulling these numbers from the 2020 City of Boise Neighborhood Data Almanac. And for the Southwest, we have two neighborhood associations, the South Coal Neighborhood Association and the Southwest Ada County Alliance. And in terms of population, these two neighborhoods make up roughly 46,000 residents. In terms of the City of Boise's area of impact, that would be about 20% of the population. For housing, this neighborhood, this area has roughly 94% single-family housing, which is on the higher end for neighborhoods throughout the city. And on transportation-wise, 83.5% of the commute trips are drive alone, where the average across the city is closer to 78, 79%. And just to put things in perspective, I crunched some numbers to see what does 46,000 residents look like. And if this area of the Southwest were to incorporate into their own city, it would be roughly the eighth-largest city in Idaho, just smaller than Twin Falls. So, we're talking about a big population here. Current conditions regarding our level of service, vehicular-level service tracking, and specifically the PM peak. Here, you can see a map of the arterials throughout the county, and really, the areas in red are where we have the Level Service F. So, failing, worse conditions that we can measure. And you'll notice that really, it is concentrated today, as of April 2021, in the Southwest. So, we have over six miles of Victory Road, multiple miles on Maple Grove, Five Mile, Cloverdale, and so forth. And just for a comparison, here's a call-out of downtown Boise. And during peak periods, during rush hour, peak PM, we don't have a single road in downtown that is performing worse than a Level Service D. And there's only two intersections that are at a Level Service F. So, land use history. I decided to start this with the 1980 Southwest Community Comprehensive Plan, which was adopted, and I guess, updated in 1991. And there were really two main reasons for that. One, during this time, the city incorporated this area into the area of impact. And then, also, we had a lot of groundwater issues and sewer service issues that required this comprehensive plan to come together and with the city and Ada County working hand-in-hand to develop it. This plan calls out everything from the proposed transportation network to land use network, to locations of schools, open space, and fire stations. Also, in the early '90s, the Magrddio Park Site was first, the first master plan was created. And this was really viewed as a 155-acre regional park to really provide that park service to all of the Southwest. And there was also a fire station proposed at that site. In the 2000s, the comprehensive plan continued to evolve. And then, also, at this time, the Pearl Jensen Park Site, which is a little over 50 acres, was proposed with the master plan. Once again, another regional park with a proposed fire station. In 2011, the Blueprint Boise Comprehensive Plan, as we have today, was created. And this really, for the Southwest, pulls a lot of that same language, that same, the same themes from that Southwest Community Comprehensive Plan. Specifically, looking at the land use map, the Southwest is identified largely as large lot and suburban land use designations with a little bit of compact in between. Also, during the 2010s, the Seringa Plan, Seringa Valley Plan was adopted. This is also, this was the third specific plan for the City of Boise and also referred to as SPO3. For this plan, there's roughly 522 acres that were identified with 2,500 dwelling units, about 40 acres of commercial and industrial, as well as a school, several park sites, and another fire station. And then, for present, really since 2020, we continue to track current developments that are occurring in the area as similar with the rest of the city and the rest of the Treasure Valley. The Southwest has continued to grow. And one in particular, for example, is the Muriel Farms Park Site, which is still, excuse me, Muriel Farms Development, which is still very preliminary. But in this case, it's looking at just under 400 acres and an additional 2,600 dwelling units. Also, during this time, the City of Boise Activities Center's almanac was created. And this almanac calls out two activity centers within Blueprint Boise and for the Southwest and really, across the whole city, look at how are the health of those activity centers? Kind of tying the bridge between that land use planning side and the transportation planning side is the Boise Transportation Action Plan. This was completed in 2016, and it's really the city's This was completed in 2016 and it's really the city's, um, roadmap to a modern, well-balanced transportation system, um, which provides real choices and creates great places. Specifically for the Southwest, this area was identified as a suburban area, air, a suburban neighborhood. Excuse me. And here are just two call out pictures from, from the Boise Tap. And so here it's, um, really visualizing a lot of the things. I feel like we are incorporating at the district today. And that's including detached multi-use pathways, protected bike lanes, um, bulb outs were feasible and so forth. With transportation history, I decided to start in the 1990s as well. And so in 1992, the Ada Planning Association, which is now Compass, um, it created the 2010 Regional Transportation Plan. Think of this as Communities in Motion 2010. Um, during that time, they also created 2025, Destination 2025. And, and with all of Compass's planning documents, this is really where the Treasure Valley gets their technical data. So they run the transportation modeling for the valley. They look at the demographic analysis, determine what are those population projections and, um, job protect, projections as well. In the 2000s, um, our first master street map was, was created. And, um, what this map does is help identify what are those future, um, really what's the roadmap for the future? So looking at where are arterial networks, where are our collector networks? And what are the size of those roads and what they need to be? That way we can make sure that we are preserving the correct right of way today. This, this map has been adopted, um, every two years since 2000. And most recently it was adopted on October 30th by the commission and then brought, um, brought to the city council on December 8th and adopted formally into Blueprint Boise. Also in the 2000s, we had the Southwest Boise Transportation Study. And, and with this plan, ACHD and the city really both saw the need to dive in a little deeper in terms of the transportation network for the Southwest. And so, um, this took the recommendations from the Compass Communities in Motion Plans and, and really looked at what are those transportation, um, modeling projections? There were a lot, there was a lot of state stakeholder outreach to, to figure out what are the plans for those, um, undeveloped areas? And, and tried to just dive into deeper to better, um, to make sure that the master street map, our capital improvements plan, and any other transportation documents, um, had a, a true, um, area-specific plan for this, for the Southwest. In 2010, um, or in the 2010s, as I mentioned, Boise Tap was completed. Um, a few other plans include Communities in Motion 2040 and then 2042.0. Valley Regional Transit created Valley Connect 2.0, which really looks at, um, the, the current health of the transportation network in the Treasure Valley, but also creates two different scenarios. An interim scenario and a growth scenario. In terms of the Southwest, uh, you, you have to wait till the, the growth scenario to see, uh, transit starting to occur. And there's really, there's really only two routes that are identified for the Southwest. One along Maple Grove and one along, uh, Five Mile and Eagle. And, um, one of the most eye-opening things for me when, when reviewing these documents and specifically Valley Connect 2.0 is in order to achieve that growth scenario, it's roughly 15 times the financial commitment that we have today. So, um, the, the magnitude's a scale to see those, um, two routes realized in the Southwest. Um, we have a lot of work to do. And then finally, we have the Southwest Boise Neighborhood Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan. This was completed in, uh, 2018 and identifies 101 different sidewalk projects, um, bikeway projects, crossing projects, pathways, projects and so forth. And then today, as I mentioned, the master street map, um, was the latest interd- iteration was adopted, um, October by the commission, December by city council. And then last year, we also completed our update to the capital improvements plan. So how are we implementing all of these documents? The first step is with our capital improvements plan and our integrated five-year work plan, as you, um, saw presented by Christie. And, and so for the Southwest, what this plan really identifies is not only what are those, um, lane widths that we need, but also a rough timeline between now and 2040 of when, when those need to be accomplished. Going back to that level of service map in the beginning, um, really much of Amity, Five Mile, Maple Grove, Cloverdale are all level service F today. Um, and then we also have the, the neighborhood plan project. So here are just two maps identifying all of those pedestrian improvements and bicycle, improvements that, that we are currently working toward with our community programs, projects. Just to conclude, uh, Southwest Boise is unique. There's a lot of challenges primarily to that population size and how it's, uh, within the city, uh, city of area of impact, but not city limits. Land use planning has its foundations from the 1980s with the Southwest Community Comprehensive Plan and really has continued to build upon those, um, those goals and vision with, um, the current iteration of Blueprint Boise. Our, our transportation planning has really worked hand in hand with those, um, supported land use directions. And then also the, the compass projections in terms of traffic modeling, demographics and population growth. And, um, across the board, there's been consistency with our past plans and agency direction for expanding the transportation network in the Southwest. That concludes my prepared presentation and I'll be happy to stand for any questions. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Um, I apologize if it's a little loud in the back, background. I'm, uh, here in the shop today. So Tom, um, a couple of things. So I heard that we've got about 83.5% are drive alone trips in our Southwest area. I'm hearing it's, it's not looking super feasible to get a lot of transit out in that area anytime soon. And the bikeability, you know, still has quite a bit of work to do. So my question is, are the reason, do we think that part of the reason that we're having 83% of those be drive alone trips is because that area is under, underdeveloped and there aren't developed activity centers where people could walk or bike? Or, you know, not take every single one of those trips by a single occupancy vehicle? Or is it that there are those amenities that are out there? There are good bicycle infrastructure and walking, uh, paths that people could use. But they're not using them. If that, if that makes sense. I'm trying to figure out if part of the reason why that number is so high is because there's so little stuff out there as far as activity center stuff to use that people have to drive? Or, um, if it's, if they're not doing that because there's no infrastructure for walking or biking?
Madam Mayor, um, council member, Halle Burton. I, I think it's a, it's a combination of things. And so it's hard to put, put the pulse on one exact, one exact item. I, I think there's, um, there's service needs out there, obviously with, with the, you know, lack of parks. There's one community library. A, a lot of those residents are, are going to downtown Boise, going to Kuna, going to, um, Overland Road, for example, for their, for their commercial activities. I think that plays a role into it. Um, there's also, you know, a, as you could see with that level of service map, a lot of those roads are still, um, your farm-to-market roads. And so they don't have the sidewalks. They don't have the multi-use paths, the protected bike lanes, um, that we, we tend to see in our more developed areas. And so there, there's, there's a combination of, of the infrastructure need that's limiting those connections. And then also the, the land use needs of not having the services, um, for services in an area that's easily to, you know, walk to or bike to.
Great, Tom. Thank you and good to see you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thanks, Tom.
Thank you very much.
I imagine there's more to come on this one, more discussion that needs to be had. Appreciate the information.
Absolutely.
Okay, next up.
Um, Madam President.
Oh, yes.
Or I mean, Madam Mayor and Mr. President, excuse me, got it mixed up. Um, I, I just, uh, I think this is really important. Um, and I would really encourage council members to explore this, uh, further. Because we've acquiesced to this notion going back to 20 years or so, that every one of those mile line roads are going to be expressways. We're gonna build them out. And, uh, basically create walls between, so you basically have neighbor, it's a mile-by-mile neighborhood. That assumption was built into the, um, master street map and pretty much acquiesced by partners since then. And I think this is where sort of the, we're realizing as we try and integrate a really effective, um, uh, bicycle and pedestrian network into that system, uh, you can't really do it if you have these busy arterials. You have to also realize level of service F just means that at the peak hour, at the busiest time of the year, it'll be frustrating to drive through. You'll have to wait. But what happens and the deaths that happen on a lot of our arterials, uh, usually happen on weekends. They happen on, uh, after hours. And so you're in imagining these neighborhoods where the attraction is across the street. This new park is going to be built on Maple Grove. But if we just design it to say, we're going to get, um, level of service, uh, temporarily down from F to E for cars. And of course it'll go right back up to F as more development happens. Um, so we, uh, the level of service for cars is a product of the development patterns. These neighborhoods do not have the gridded streets that we have in downtown Boise. So the comparison Tom made is well-taken because in fact, we have a gridded system in those areas where we don't have level of service F. And we don't have a gridded system. So we have low level of service A in a lot of streets until you hit the arterial, and then it's all dumping onto the arterial at the same time. And then you have level of service F. The other is we're trying to integrate a measurement that is using pedestrian and bicycle level of traffic stress so that we can compare what are we trading away? As we decide, we want to temporarily provide level of cer- lower level of service or less frustration for drivers, for a year or two, or maybe not even that. Um, so I think we need to, to look at that. I believe in this area, there has to be, the, which of those mile roads are the expressways? That ones that are going to basically serve as a wall between neighborhoods? Um, and it looks like we're moving that way on Cloverdale because it goes all the way south. It connects way south. Five Mile and Maple Grove do not. They hit the canal. And yet the master street map suggests eventually we're going to build bridges over it so we can just widen them. And so you're going to have Five Mile, you're going to have Maple Grove, you're going to have, um, uh, Cloverdale. And then you keep going on west, every other one. And then the east-west corridors, you know, you got Overland and Victory and Amity. And then, um, Lake Hazel. Lake Hazel clearly is going to be designed as the expressway. But are we moving, some of them, we can't move much further because of, of the geographic configurations, but we're still widening them. So I, I really encourage you to think about, once we've built them out as a wide road, we've built a, a barrier to that neighborhood. And those neighborhoods are frustrated too, because they're already moved into areas that haven't been finished yet. So prioritizing, for example, uh, Cloverdale and, um, uh, Lake Hazel seems to make a whole lot more sense than, than gradually widening Five Mile and Maple Grove. So, uh, fortunately, uh, at least we're going to look at designs that will provide some, uh, options on Maple Grove. But, um, I would encourage you to take a look at that, go into that area. The, the frustrating thing that those folks living down there is they live in different, some are in the city, some are outside the city. They're in two different school districts. So it's like they're, it's, it's, they're not too sure what, how to represent themselves and to whom they're representing themselves. Boise has, uh, basically growth boundaries along the foothills. And you've done a great job of protecting the foothills. There's not going to be much more growth along the foothills. You've got growth boundaries as you bump up against Eagle and Meridian. And you got a growth boundary at the airport. Well, there's only.
Commissioner, Jim.
Going is.
Hey there, Jim.
One corner. So I encourage you to decide, is this going to change? Or are we just going to continue to move on, uh, and, and allow Kuna to connect with Boise?
Commissioner, Jim. Um, I, I don't think you can hear me. Um, point taken. Elaine wants to, um, give a forward-looking response quick to that so we can pivot into the next thing. Um, but yes, um, we hear you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanson. I, I, I agree with you. If we're going to change this, we need to agree together because the city can't do it alone and neither can ACHD to take a more comprehensive look at the area. I'm ready to do that if the commission is. I think the council would agree with that. So I'm hoping that between now and the next time we meet, we can have discussions online to move that direction.
Right. That sounds good. All right. Thank you, Tom. So Karen is walking up to the podium. Sean is here as well. And this discussion item relates to the industrial area out, um, Orchard to Izeman along Lake Hazel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council Commissioners. And we can go through this fairly quickly. So ACHD is, uh, interested in the city's vision for the Lake Hazel area. Commissioner Hanson just mentioned, uh, the importance of Lake Hazel. And this map just shows, uh, it being one of our regional corridors running south of I-84 and, um, the City of Meridian and the airport. The area that is dashed here is what we're focusing on from Orchard to Izeman. Talking about the regional corridor, we do support the access management along this corridor that we can maintain the traffic flow and that regional connectivity through this area. That is supported by the secondary roadway system, which you can see in the kind of green dashed lines here that are to the north of Lake Hazel. We do support the roundabouts as the first press preference for intersection treatments, as well as multi-use paths for pedestrians and bicycles along Lake Hazel. One of the last items to highlight on this corridor is out near Izeman, between Izeman and the on-ramps is the city is very supportive of protecting those on-ramps. So we don't have a situation that, uh, occurred at 84 and Eagle Road, um, where St. Luke's had some driveways that were very close. And we continue to see a lot of congestion and crashes. And then, uh, ITD went and put those medians in, which really cleaned that up. So again, just really trying to protect the regional corridor here. And that's one of the items that we're, we're focusing on. As far as land use, um, with the airport in this area, uh, this isn't a great place for residential right next to it. So I've highlighted the industrial area that, uh, the city is protecting. This is our last industrial area. So that's important. You can see to the west of Orchard here, we've already had, um, development that is residential. And it also has a supportive commercial too. Commercial can be on either side here, but the big difference is residential versus industrial. And then to the south of, uh, the tracks southeast here, yeah, there is an opportunity up the bench for, um, uh, future development, most likely some kind of planned unit development. Let's see. So talking about the alignment, as you see, um, Lake Hazel does have an angle to it here. And so I wanted to specifically talk about the sharper angles at Pleasant Valley and Lake Hazel. This is a, uh, zooming into that area and you can see that the property lines are all running north, south, east, west. So this is when things get a, a little more interesting when you have an angle. And, uh, Lake Hazel does need to drop down at a fairly good angle in this area, as does Pleasant Valley. So typically when you have development that comes in, uh, they will lessen the angle on their property and hope that the, or push it off onto the next development to pick up that angle. So we're in a very interesting situation here. This, the city's objective would be to, um, kind of share that angle across parcels so that they all have a, a share in that angle. Because the, the smaller parcels, when, uh, the larger parcel gets bisected, can create some smaller triangles that just make it more difficult to develop. So that's, uh, just coming back to here that the, the overall objective is to get from Orchard and Lake Hazel down here to Izeman. Um, and besides crossing the tracks at a 90-degree angle, um, this is the alignment that's, it's just, it's a very high-level alignment. And either we're going to see it parcel by parcel as development comes through unless, unless the district and the city would like to work together to plan that out. So everybody knows what the angles will be, uh, ahead of time. So moving on from there, the last item that we want to talk about is just the timing. This is in ACHD's capital improvement for construction roughly in that 2036 to 40 timeframe. Of course, we know that that's, um, um, flexible, but that's where it's listed at this time. We are seeing development both at the west end here at Orchard, um, out in Gateway East, along Izeman, south of Winco, as well as up at Gallon at this point. And like I said, that can either continue incrementally or take a, uh, more concerted effort to construct that. Um, and with, that's the end of what I have.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Madam Mayor, thank you. We agreed that I would add on to this. As Karen mentioned, the city's begun to see development applications out in this area, particularly at the Lake Hazel Orchard and just east of there. The city property near the Izeman interchange is now developing at quite a fast pace. And we're preparing to build that very first section of this extension out there. So the question to the commission is whether or not you're, you would be interested in working with the city for us to work with the developers and the landowners who aren't currently bringing developments to us, but who have land that they've indicated they are interested in developing at some point. Both to figure out what the alignment will be, but more importantly, to allow the private sector to build the first section of this. This is envisioned as a two-sided parkway where you have two lanes on one side, two lanes on the other. And it might be that we could get at least two lanes of it built by the private sector early if you would be willing to entertain an impact fee forgiveness program. This happened in the city of Boise for Park Center. The private sector built Park Center and over time, as that land developed, until they got to the cost of the, of the roadway that they built at their expense, their impact fees were forgiven. And we think that this might be a way, because there's such a demand for industrial land right now in this valley, to pursue this much before the 2036 or 40 timeframe and serve both that industrial development demand that we're seeing, but also serve your interest in making sure that, that financially it works for everyone. So I, we thought we'd bring this up, see if it's something, you know, high level agreement. And then we can work on details, but if, if there's interest, then we can move forward.
Madam Mayor, I, I, I think I would not be going too far at all to say that we would love to talk about that. We know the history of those types of agreements. And I, I look at this entire area with the development that's going to occur to the, to the west that's occurring now. And with the, the road being completed earlier, at least two lanes. So that, and this will take some marketing by whichever entities are most appropriate for it. But to get people maybe excited about being able to live closer to where they work, which would kill all kinds of birds with the same stone. You know, as far as congestion and transportation goes, I'd love to see this be a kind of a Petri dish or experiment for that very thing.
That's great to hear. And maybe we can feed those birds with, but the same seed instead.
Yeah, well.
So what I propose with that one, thank you Karen, Sean in the background and Council President and Commissioner, Mr. President. What I propose, that goes on the list also for offline discussion. So we've got Southwest Boise and now the Lake Hazel conversation and that will figure out a group of folks and at the staff level and perhaps commission level to build on this. Great, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, next, oh, this is why you were there, Sean. Although you were listed on the other one too, parklets and patios. And this is one, as Sean's pulling up his slides, that we appreciate the partnership we've had with ACHD. And they were so, these were so well received that there are many businesses in town that, you know, are interested in doing this. And so Sean's brought an update, but also some ideas, I think.
Thank you, Member, thank you Mayor and members of the council and members of the commission. Yeah, as the mayor mentioned, very excited to be able to provide an update to all of you today and provide some ideas of how we might move this program forward in, in the continuing time that we have. So just some background on the program. This expanded patio and parklet program, as we've called collectively Boise on the Block, was initiated with the support of our partners, including ACHD in mid 2020. And it was a joint effort along with ACHD with local agencies and organizations and most critically businesses who did their part to advocate for having a place to, to have customers in a, in a safe and, and vibrant way that would enhance public space around the businesses. So it was initiated initially as a, as a code response and business assistance program, of course. But what we've seen it evolve into is a, as a new way to use public right of way to engage the public and create these vibrant, safe, accessible public places that are part of our community fabric. And this was enabled in part by temporary amendments to Boise City Code that allowed for the sidewalk, sidewalk cafes to, to move into the sidewalk area as well as across the sidewalk and into the public right of way at the streets, creating what we now know as parklets. And this is presently enabled through April 2022 through our, our temporary ordinances. Some of the goals of this program included, of course, again, providing a path to viability and profitability and recovery for some of these hardest hit small businesses, many of which were in the service and restaurant industry. And of course, as part of that, creating an opportunity to make creative use of public right of way space and to create a more complete use of, of our streets. And in all of this, of course, make it accessible, pedestrian friendly and, and a vibrant outdoor public space. And the, the patios and parklets in particular were built upon the template that was created early in this process, which was, which was Eighth Street. And the idea being that we could replicate some of those ideas that were made possible in Eighth Street beyond just Eighth Street and downtown. So patios and parklets are something that are available to businesses throughout the city. A few metrics to go along with the program so far. In 2020, we had 42 expanded patios. And that includes the patios, of course, that we had on Eighth Street and the Basque Block with the protective walkway on the Basque Block. The parklet program was initiated a little later in 2020, I believe it was in September. And altogether, we had seven parklets, which was partially reflected, reflective of the fact that many businesses just weren't sure how long the program was going to last. They didn't know how much they should invest in it. So in any case, we were excited to see seven of them come about with the cooperation of our, our partners here. And that included four that remained in use throughout the winter. Now in 2021, we have 58 total expanded patios and parklets that are both existing and requested. And I'm sorry, the 58 is the total expanded patios. And then between 10 and 20 parklets that maybe requested isn't, isn't the best word, but contemplated, some of which, you know, we'll, we'll have to consider in the context of where they're proposed to be placed. But it could be as many as 20 parklets from the feedback and interest we've heard from businesses. And that, of course, includes the four that we currently have in place right now. Some of the benefits that we've seen, both in terms of, of hard data as well as anecdotally, I think it's safe to say that it's been a resounding success. It's provided a make or break assistance to some of these, again, hardest hit local businesses. And alongside that, we've received, we're proud to have received local and even national recognition alongside much larger cities such as Boston, San Francisco, LA and Chicago. And recent data that the DBA has done their part to collect suggests that parklets and patios not only accommodated customers where they, where they were needed, but also stimulated increased demand considerably. And we have some numbers and I've pasted the flyer in the slide here, but I'd be happy to share some of this via email with, as appropriate after the presentation. Looking ahead, recovery, of course, continues. We got through 2020. We are working through 2021 as an opportunity to continue that recovery full of pace. And demand for these outdoor patios and expanded parklet areas has, has remained high. And we've seen, according to the Downtown Boise Association, a 40% increase in demand over last year. So we have this temporary ordinance in place, thanks to leadership through April 2022. This has provided and continues to provide the necessary runway for businesses to make these longer term investments. Hopefully in, especially in these parklets and these creative uses of, of a public right of way. And alongside this, businesses have expressed the desire to get more creative with design and improve the, the feel of that public space and the overall aesthetics. So we've had a chance to look back and see some opportunities for improvement. Of course, paramount is, is maintaining safety and accessibility, but also improving the aesthetics and seeing what we can do within the confines of, of the, the applicable regulations that we have to improve the overall appearance. So I'd, I'd say you could sum it up by having less of a construction zone appearance, more of a inviting public space, which is something that we've heard from businesses. This would include, of course, a bright color palette to ensure visibility. But we'd also like to explore some various alternatives for vehicular barriers to ensure safety alongside of those improved aesthetics. Some of the key variables that go along with this are time. So this is the time that businesses have to recoup their, any investment that they have in the parklet spaces. And, and then of course, the creative approaches to materials and design, which will approach in close collaboration with, with our partners, certainly ACHD being a primary one. Just a few examples of what has been done in other contexts across the country during COVID. And this was happening, of course, before the pandemic. But it, it really created this, this opportunity for cities around the country, including Boise, to explore what they could do with this public space. So you have cities, of course, like our, our neighbors over there in Seattle, all the way over to Clayton, Missouri, a suburb of, of St. Louis, San Francisco and Somerville, Massachusetts, making use of their public space and, and really exploring what you can do with that and making some investment in those, in those spaces as well. Some of the concepts that we've come up with, with our design partners here, working with the Downtown Boise Association and, and design professionals. This is a concept that has been imagined that could use some of the existing rental water barriers that we've been using and a relatively straightforward covering that could, that could be put over it and incorporated and incorporate a planter, for example. All, all businesses seem to really like the idea of having planters in the parklets. And incorporating that bright color palette is, is of course, part of that. Here's an example from Williamsburg, Virginia. And in this particular case, the planters that you see here are actually urban terrorism or anti-terrorism barricades. And so what is, what is a planter and functionality and appearance is, is actually a, a real anti-terrorism enforced protection device that has been used around the world in, in, you know, combat situations as well as in, in cities that just need to protect themselves for whatever reason against terrorism concerns. So these are water barriers, much like the ones that we've used here in Boise. They come in a range of sizes and capacities. Colors are spectas necessary. I actually spoke to the owner of this company this morning and he assured me that we could, if interested, we could, we could customize these to our needs. So they're designed to protect against vehicle intrusions, of course, and, and a number of other potential threats. He also offered up some of the demonstrations of how these barriers have been used in real practice and offered this one of the barrier standing up to a 120 millimeter mortar shell. So they're both decorative and durable. I can't say what happened to the, to the flowers on top of the parklet, but they certainly stood up to what was thrown at them. In terms of next steps, we look forward to working with staff, both at Ada County Highway District and City, as well as other relevant partners, implement some design modifications where appropriate. We're looking again to improve the overall aesthetics and user experience and look to implementing potentially a modified color palette and some new materials to, to do this and ensure their functionality as traffic control devices along, along with the aesthetic improvements. And we're currently working closely with the DBA who, who are, who are looking to ensure feasibility and funding for these in cooperation with businesses. And meanwhile, we will look to accept applications for these new parklets and expanded patio proposals and implement them with close guidance with our, our key partners. With that, I'll, I'll open it to discussion. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I must say that remembering when this came before us, I don't think I've seen a, a single other issue be treated with as much enthusiasm as, as we did. And we were so happy. And Boise is a destination, you know, not just, it's for business, it's for pleasure, for entertainment, you name it. There's still plenty of corridors to get in and out of town fast for those who need to. But to be able to, to see this happen was, was very nice. You had and have so many more decisions to make about this than we do. All we have to do is say yes, which again, was easy. Thank you.
Commissioner, did you have your hand up?
Well, yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I, I just had just a couple of questions. I'm not intimately familiar with this particular program. Did the implementation of the, of the parklets and patios program involve? Did we remove travel lanes, bike lanes, parking? Is that what was involved in this?
We made a vacation. We gave them the property.
Okay, all right.
It was parking spot, parking spots.
Okay. So, and I guess that, you know, a few minutes ago, we saw a, a map of downtown Boise showing level of service on the, on the street network in the downtown area, showing that in general, that things work pretty well. But I would imagine all of the measurements for those level service were done probably prior to this parklet and patio program. I wonder if we have any indication how it's affected traffic? And that's my only question.
My guess, it would be not at all because of the limited space that is involved here so far, just Eighth Street. Yeah.
Well, and it's, and it's extended beyond Eighth Street, but it's into the parking spaces along various other streets downtown.
So it has primarily been parking spaces rather than travel lanes or, or bike lanes? Okay, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, oh, sorry, I guess that's you.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think this is, this makes sense. I think we should move towards a permanent situation. ACHD doesn't do parking. The, the city regulates parking. So and as, as has been observed, we have a tendency to provide more space for cars to sleep than for people to sleep in our cities. And if it's, it's a decision the city wants to make, we should make it as streamlined as possible as, and they just do the analysis. We don't do an analysis of return on economic investment from ours, but you do. You determine whether that's going to be a valuable way of encouraging investment by private enterprise. So I would suggest we move to something a little more permanent. We don't have these processes where every time you want to add a new one, you have to come back to us. We just say it's yours. We do it through a joint powers agreement because we don't regulate parking and do that sort of economic analysis stuff. As long as the, the access standards are met, that we're required to have met in the right of way, I think we can resolve this.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, oh, thank you. Hi, everyone. I just wanted to thank Sean for that presentation and thank the city for pursuing this a year ago and coming back and saying we want to expand it or make this a little bit more permanent and widespread. I think this is a fantastic idea and looking forward to more collaboration with all of you.
All right, before we move on, thanks, everybody. Thank you, Sean. Was there anything, I see this was a discussion, no, this was just a presentation. But did you need anything more than that feedback that you just got?
Mayor, thank you. I think that feedback is largely sufficient. We are just looking to ensure that we have the support of this joint council and commission to move forward with, with staff, particularly with our partners at ACHD to move forward with some of these potential modifications, things like color palette design. And, you know, the creativity that will allow these businesses to be able to do a little bit more of what they want. Thank you, Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
If I could, Sean, the thing, I, I'm very supportive of this. If we're going to move forward with a more permanent ordinance, it would, we will need to know what barriers there are. I know there was some state alcohol and bureau permissions that we got. Can we make those permanent? I don't know what other permissions we needed to do to use some of these. So I, I think I can speak for the council in saying, we'd love to entertain making this more permanent as long as we know how to overcome those obstacles.
Madam Mayor, Council President Clay, thank you. And you're correct, I think part of this depends on some of the, the work that we'll, we'll probably need to do with the state of Idaho. the work that we'll we'll probably need to do with the state of Idaho alcohol beverage control.
The the one thing I want to elevate, though, that Sean said was and I appreciate the suggestion that we look at the changes that need to be made for some of these areas. The city deems appropriate to make more more long lasting and permanent because we have heard from businesses that they would like to see that. We've heard from our residents that they love it. It's in parking spaces, et cetera, and we have garages that have space. But Sean also needs right now, because so many of the businesses have been asking for some aesthetic modifications. And so Sean needs right now, beyond the long term stuff, to work with ACHD staff and city staff to come to an agreement that, yes, this is safe, yes, this is bright enough. And then the businesses can make the investments as they see fit, or the agencies are doing the same.
Should be no problem with that. I just noticed, though, that one way to make Jimmy laugh is to say something like incoming mortar shells. Sorry, Jimmy.
Excellent. Okay, Sean, you've got you got it. Great. I look forward to hearing that people have gotten together and made the decision on that because we've heard a lot, a lot from our businesses that they'd like to make some changes for the summer. Thank you. So next up, our final item with just the privileged amount of time, fifteen minutes. Thank you, everybody, for keeping us on schedule, is an update on the pathways master plan. Council saw this earlier, but we wanted to share this with ACHD because you guys are important partners in this. So you'll see Bree closest to the microphone and Deanna behind her are here to present.
Madam Mayor, council members, commissioners, my name is Deanna Dupree. I'm in the comprehensive planning division and I'm here to give the update on the Boise Pathways Plan. We're going to quickly give an overview of the plan, then move into our progress to date, talk quickly about our goals, a little bit about their pathway system, past and present, and then Bree will jump in with her a summary of our spring outreach and next steps. Before we get too far, I want to kind of take a second to think and to have a stop and think about the green belt that it took fifty years to build the pathway that we know today and it started with our plan. So with that, our direction has been to create a plan that's going to identify a network of non-motorized off-street pathways across the city. We're going to need, we'll also identify implementation and policy recommendations so that our plan has longevity. We'll then propose various pathway designs so we understand the level of effort needed to build it out across the city. And then we're going to end with a prioritization of pathway segments so that we can begin implementation as soon as we finish the plan. Throughout the progress, throughout the project, we've worked with our community and began to really think about what are the goals of this pathway system? And then, once we have that identification of goals, how do we make sure we're getting the right pathway segments across the city? So first and foremost, we want this system to make useful connections. We're really approaching this with an eye to promote equity, access and choice for all our residents. We want to be this pathway system to not only enable active lifestyles, but also allow you to recreate and commute both from that active perspective. And then really this idea we've seen a lot in the pandemic is to preserve and connect to nature. Our residents, wherever they are, deserve to have that ability to connect with nature. And while we're, you know, looking at our future pathway system with those goals, we've been really focused on having goals about implementation, partnership development and recognizing our community voice as we move through the process to identify our pathway network. And we know an ambitious plan like this is possible because in nineteen seventy six, we just had, we had just two miles of pathways. And by twenty twenty one, we now have fifty five miles. And this is really because of the hard work and the commitment over these years to get this done. We were able to review numerous plans since the seventies and this idea of the green belt that we've been working towards a transportation network that provides choice for all of our residents, whether it's on street or off street, and really building towards that within our planning processes. So with that, we did a lot of analysis, again, reading previous plans and then understanding our pathways system as it is today and to identify some strengths, opportunities, weaknesses and challenges. We know our number one strength is our regional connections and our regional system, which is the green belt. So let's leverage that as we build out our network. And I know ACHD has done, you know, taken a previous or a similar approach when they look at the on-street facilities connecting to the strength of the green belt. We also know that there's a lot of opportunity with partnership development, partnering with ACHD or leveraging our private development as we build out our system. Of course, we do have some weaknesses that we're going to have to address. We have a lot of fragmented networks where we've done a kind of a good job in a subdivision, but it doesn't, it lacks limited utility for real real commutes or real recreation. It's a small segment, so we'll have to build that and cover those gaps. And then we're going to have challenges that are going to continue to be challenges as we move through implementation, but that we'll need to address in the plan. While there's geographic constraints like getting from the West Bench down the hill across Chindin to the Green Belt, or if it's, you know, challenges with working with our irrigation districts to make sure that they can operate still and that all users are safe within that corridor.
I'll go through some of the outreach we did this spring. We'll have another round in the summer and then a couple of things we didn't share with council on Tuesday coming up next. So that will be, that'll be fun to see. We had an online survey open for five weeks. We got over two thousand responses. Our consultant said this was one of their most successful surveys that they have been a part of, so we were really proud of the engagement on that. We also had a map as a part of that survey where folks were allowed to draw on a map where they use pathways currently or where they might like to see one in the future. And those provided some really good suggestions. And then we had four community neighborhood conversations, which we had council president Clegg, a council member Halliburton, and the mayor participate in. So those were really good opportunities to see people in person and get more feedback on those goals that Deanna mentioned. We had twelve questions in this survey and one of them was more open ended. So in calling through the answers for that, we realized some overarching themes, the top being enhanced quality of life. We had a lot of people mention that using pathways currently gives them access to outdoor recreation opportunities. It makes their commute more enjoyable, but it also provides connections to places they need to go downtown to schools, their everyday needs like grocery stores and whatnot. And then another top theme was it would relieve pressure on the roadways for them and they're able to drive less, they're able to ride their bike or walk on the pathway instead of getting in their car to go where they need to go. And a couple other questions we asked that are kind of along these lines, what people use pathways for currently, what they get out of pathways, why they choose to use them, landed in the quality of life category. But in this next slide, you'll see the top three reasons people said they did not use pathways more. And this came up in the in-person meetings as well. People felt like they didn't have a safe or convenient pathway nearby for them to use. And then really emphasizing safety when it comes to pathways near roadways or could be hazardous hazardous on the path or sorry. And then they don't connect where they need to go. It's not getting them to useful destinations. This was something that came up a little bit earlier in the Southwest Boise discussion. And maybe there's some subdivisions that have pathways out there, but because there's no development nearby, there's nothing really that they want to go to using that pathway. And along those same lines, we have so many opportunities to capitalize on the pathways plan to build enhanced quality of life, create more connections for people making so they're able to make the choice to drive less and address those safety concerns. In the survey, we saw this in the in-person feedback, we saw this, making sure safety is top of mind and then emphasizing that etiquette. We've seen some of this on on New Year's on the green belt, making sure it's safe for somebody who has been a long term green belt user and then maybe someone who's just learning how to ride a bike. And then another concern or challenge, access to pathways throughout the city, too. Next steps will be drafting a network. We have been really excited to consult with ACHD staff on this. They've shown us a really robust map of the on-street networks to show us where opportunities might be to connect into the really robust network that you all are building and working on policy recommendations that might need to support pathways build out, prioritizing some segments that might be easy to approach first and then another round of public outreach in late summer. We'll stand for any questions.
For a period of time, a lot longer than I've been involved with roads, I've been involved with this particular topic on commissions and task forces and you name it. And I'm remembering back in two thousand fourteen, I believe it was, when the city of Meridian finished a very exhaustive process of determining exactly what the public wanted to see them do with their city. And it wasn't even close that pathways and connectivity for bicyclists and pedestrians was by far the number one issue. Like I said, it wasn't even close. And I don't think that it's that much different in Boise than it is in Meridian. I just know we have a little more stuff on our plate with regards to growth and congestion now than we did then. But this would take care of some of that, so keep up your good work.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just a real quick point that Bree brought up that I thought was really important. Commissioner Hanson had talked a little bit earlier about the importance of this southwest area and us really looking at these connections. One of the things that's come up in our meetings and the president of SWACA is actually part of our task force that's looking at this, is the idea of having to drive to the green belt to go for a ride and how sometimes that sort of defeats the purpose. And the hope, I think, with these pathways is that people have the ability to leave their own neighborhood and to get to these other areas. And so in that southwest area that still has so much to develop, I really do agree with Commissioner Hanson that we've got to be looking at ways to not only explore these pathways, which have a lot of potential for development out there, but making sure that they're connected to roads, Maple Grove and these other ones where they can hop off and hop on and get to the schools and stuff. And so all of this stuff is super related and it's exciting to have these conversations happening at the same time.
Well, and I'll just say, you know, Mr. President, appreciate that you guys are ready and excited to work with us. A couple of weeks ago, I rode, to Jimmy's point, you know, getting getting in your car to go to the green belt. I rode from the green belt up to Shoshone Park and used the ACHD established Shoshone Bike Way. And it was awesome. Signage was great. I was only on Capitol for a little bit, and then the person that I was with told me that I could actually do something much more pleasant and move over to the bench bike way that existed and took me all the way to school. It was great. And so that took me from, you know, that pathway made it possible to go from the foothills. I actually finished after that, went on a ride in the foothills with our Parks Department. So from Shoshone Park, using the bike way that ACHD helped make happen, using the green belt, then the Pioneer Pathway to then be able to get into the foot, like through downtown into the foothills, all on a bike network, and which was really lovely. And that's really what we want to make sure happens as we look at the southwest and other places and as we're looking at this plan. So thanks very much for that update. So just in wrapping, thanks, everybody, for joining us today. I have three, but I'm going to add a fourth thing just on this. Takeaways for staff after this. The first two of them I've mentioned, but the first is the group to work on the southwest area to have that conversation about current plans. I'd add pathways into the connections of the streets and what's happening with that mile by mile network. And the next is the Lake Hazel work that can happen in between these meetings as well, exploring whether or not something similar to the Park Center model of partnership could work to make possible some some industrial development out there. And then finalizing as soon as possible, the short term safety and aesthetics options for the parklets so that businesses have some certainty and Downtown Boise Association and others can make some investments to address that for this summer. And then any any continued partnership between our staffs on the pathways is much appreciated. And with that, I look forward to the next one of these. It was great to see the two of you here in the chambers and, of course, you director and and the staff that came along for presentations. And I imagine we'll see more of you next time we all get together. With that, I would propose that we do we need to make a motion to adjourn? No, all right. I'll just say we're adjourned. Thanks, all.
Thank you, everyone.
Everyone, take care.